Right, good morning, everyone. Today is Tuesday, September 15th. The time is 9:00 a.m. The Board of 80 County Commissioners, we are in session for our open business meeting. We have all three commissioners with us today. And on bridge, we have Sean Rain, Brad Smith. We have Timothy Klein. We have Steve Redford. We have Catherine Wiley. We have Eric Harringer. And Eric, you are from?
Sorry, I present, just on the bond topic.
Okay, great. Thank you. Welcome. We have Elizabeth Duncan.
Thank you.
We have Phil McGrane, Bob Perkins, Elizabeth Mon. And in the room with us, we have, and we'll start with you, Ammon.
Ammon Taylor, Prosecutor's Office.
Christian Anderson, Zions Bank.
Nancy Burdell, Prosecutor's Office.
Mike Scarder, Holy Roxel.
Adam Christensen, Holy Roxel.
Welcome, everyone. All right, any changes to the agenda, Madam Clerk?
No, they're not.
None? You know, no, we will talk about tabling those. Yeah. After we have a discussion.
Wait a minute, right?
Yeah. Okay. All right, I'll need a motion to remove the unfinished business from the table. Mr. Malloy?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move to remove unfinished business from the table for consideration.
Need a second? Okay, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, and I just have it. Motion carries. All right, first up, we're going to take up Resolution 2551. This is the Sosource Procurement, Research and Advisory Services. And I believe this was tabled from 9:00 a.m. for further discussion with Steve O'Meara in IT. Did the Board have any further questions or any clarification on this, or are they satisfied?
Not for me. I think I've got all the answers that I didn't have last round.
Perfect. All righty.
Thank you.
All right, care to make a motion then? Commissioner Lachando?
You know, I'm actually looking for my motions and if you could send them to me, they may be lost.
We'll have Commissioner Malloy make the motion then.
I've got it. Madam Chair, I move to approve Resolution 2551 as listed on the agenda.
Second. Never mind. We found it.
All right. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, I just have it. Motion carries. Next up, procurement. We have a final ranking and award recommendation. This is on RFP 20074. And this is for creation of a transportation action plan. Who do we have here? Bob, are you ready to talk about this? There you are. It's the Hollywood squares up there.
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning.
Before the Board this morning, it is the final ranking and award recommendation for RFP 20074. And the evaluation committee has completed their evaluations and would like to submit a final ranking and award recommendation for your consideration.
Okay, go ahead.
All right. September 15th, 2020, to the Board of 80 County Commissioners from 80 County Procurement, requiring RFP 20074 to consult the creation of an 80 county transportation action plan. Dear members of the Board, the evaluation committee has evaluated responses for RFP 20074. A final ranking of qualified candidates was determined by the scoring. The final rankings in order of evaluation scoring are as follows. Kittles, number one, Kittleson and Associates Incorporated with a score of 89.14. Number two, Tool Design Group LLC with a score of 78.50. And number three, EDS Transport, and they were not responsible. It is recommended to evaluate toward the contract for RFP 20074, Kittleson and Associates as the number one ranking.
Okay, thank you. I just want to remind everyone to make sure that you're muting your microphones, please, if you're not speaking. All right, is that what you were going to say, Commissioner Malloy?
No, no, I was, I was going to ask Bob if that's pronounced Kittleson or Kittleson.
Commissioner Malloy, Kittleson, I believe.
Okay.
Okay. Any questions?
I'm a child, Kittleson.
All right, do we have any questions? Comments? Okay, I'll go ahead and take up a motion. Commissioner Malloy, it looks like you're ready.
Madam Chair, I move to accept the final rankings for RFP 20074, consultant for the, to assist in the creation of an 80 county transportation action plan, and accept the evaluation committee's recommendation of the award for Kittleson and Associates.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, I just have it. Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, new business. We're going to start by opening up the public hearing on Resolution Number 2553. This is a resolution for adoption of investment policy, 80 county investment policy. And we have Treasurer Beth Mon with us, who has worked hard on this. Care to say a few words before we adopt the new policy?
Yes, good morning and thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. As you noted before you, for your consideration is a revised investment policy. I'll highlight very briefly what has changed and what has not changed in this proposed policy. And what has not changed are our top priorities of safety and liquidity. Those are still main prevalent throughout the policy. Safety, that's preservation of capital and liquidity, that's meeting our obligations as they come due. What has changed in the policy before you are some provisions related to return. And those provisions are to give us a little bit more flexibility, recognizing that it's a low interest rate environment, but additional flexibility for us to earn additional return where possible. So that's the significant change in this policy and happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you, Beth. And just for the record, this Board has had a meeting, a separate meeting in addition to OBAM today for a thorough discussion analysis of the investment changes, policy changes with RVK, our consultant as well. So thank you. Any comments or questions?
That's a question, more of a comment, and especially as we move into the next item discussing how we're going to pay for infrastructure. Just a note for the general public, we're so limited in what we're able to do from an investment perspective as a public agency. And that is obviously to protect taxpayer dollars, but it also means we are able to earn the return that others might in a, in a stock market that's charging ahead. So it's really important for us to do everything we can to earn some kind of return, but also important for us to tackle projects head on because our cost escalation is far outpacing our ability to earn any kind of return.
Thank you. With that, would you care to make a motion, Commissioner Lachando?
Sure would. Madam Chair, I move to approve Resolution Number 2553 as listed on the agenda.
Need a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor state aye. Oh, I needed to close, need to close the public hearing? Now you can make the motion, Commissioner Lachando.
Okay.
If there's no, if there's no further testimony. Hearing done? Okay, we'll close it. Go ahead. Thank you.
Okay. Madam Chair, I move to approve Resolution Number 2553 as listed on the agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, I just have it. Motion carries. Next up, we're going to open the public hearing on Resolution 2554, Resolution for Corner Project Financing. The documents have been in front of the Board and there's been ongoing conversation. Just a quick update maybe from, from Christian at Zions on kind of where the market is. Is it looking favorable for issuers and our bond rating? Would you care to make a couple of comments on that?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, Madam Chair and Commissioners, we did obtain the rating from Standard Reports. Happy to report that that came at the, kind of our best expectation, which was a double A rating. The way that the rating agencies view these annual appropriation financings is they'll typically start with your general obligation rating and then want notch down from there. We were unsure going into it how the rating agency would view some of the unique complexities of the, this particular structure with the involvement of Idaho Health Facilities Authority. Thankfully, they, they, they were not concerned about those so much and assigned the same rating we would have expected for a financing without IHFA. So happy about that and thank you, Madam Chair, for your involvement and participation in the rating meeting that we had. I think that was very helpful.
Well, I think, yeah, we need to thank Catherine Graves as well, as Ammon. They did a great job walking us through this process, so.
As for the numbers, do you have this sheet?
I know.
It's been circulated, but I think it was.
Yeah, it's been, yeah, we've.
So, do you read it?
Fine, go ahead.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I've presented a range here, and there's a couple of reasons for that. One is that we're still a couple of weeks out from pricing. Pricing is scheduled for September 30th. And the closer we get to the November election, kind of the more difficult it becomes to predict what the market's going to do. And of course, we've seen in the last month, the market is, is changing all the time as, as, as new news comes out. So just to be careful there, we've provided a range, but also because I want to get, at least introduce a concept to the Board today to get some feedback on some of your priorities. So with this, with the $32 million project cost, as always, the, the costs of the financing are factored in here. So we're delivering 32 million for the project plus the issuance cost. There's two versions here. So on the low end here, there's annual payments of about $1.65 million is an estimate with an interest payment in 2021 of just under a million. And so that's if you just want to pay interest in 2021, and then we have principal and interest in every year after. Or if the county is comfortable paying principal and interest in 2021, given what you've budgeted toward the project, by combining the two of those and not taking that extra year before you start paying principal, we bring all those payments down a bit to the 1.614. Same thing on the high end. If we do interest only in 2021, that's about $1.1 million estimated. Annual payments thereafter, just over $1.7 million. Or if we pay principal and interest beginning in 2021, then we're at about $1.68 million across the entire 30 years. Are there any questions on that before I move into this other concept?
No, we don't need to make a decision on this today, though. We can adopt the resolution and confer with Kathleen and the Clerk's office and then get back with you. I just want to make sure, you know, it sounds like we'd go ahead with the 1.68, but let's, let's confer and make sure with Kathleen, if that's okay.
So would you?
Madam Chair.
And then Ammon? Yes.
I just, I did have a question. When he's talking about the 32 million project cost, that's the structure and the build-out as well, correct?
Yes.
Correct.
Yes. Yep. And then Mike, did you have a comment on that?
I think, if I may, Madam Chair, I think I want to introduce this other concept of the range.
I just wanted, Ammon, maybe just, just before we start talking about, you just mentioned the two-step process amateurs, the resolutions for the Board.
Correct.
Can put the timing of this into.
Yeah. Correct. That may be helpful. So today, before the Board, is a resolution to approve the form of the documents. And in particular, we were talking about the leases that will be put into place, the indenture.
Annual appropriation lease, yeah.
Yep. And there's also bond purchase agreement in there, but that, the actual final approval of that agreement will take place on September 30th. With the schedule that we have in place currently, I think we have it on the calendar for a meeting at that time with the Board to approve the final pricing. So once we take this information, we have the documents approved as the form and the Chair's been authorized, that'll go out and be posted, go out to the market, there'll be a negotiation to take place with that. Pricing will come back for final approval before the Board on the 30th at the end of the month. And at that point, there will be a decision, an official decision by the Board to accept that pricing moving forward.
And that's when we can make the call on the, the costs.
Correct. And I think Christian, Christian mentioned here, though, as part of that and going through the process of negotiating, getting the pricing in place for something for the Board to, to consider at that meeting, I think Christian's looking for some direction in terms of what approach to take in negotiating that pricing. So it won't be a formal decision on that, but at least give him some parameters when we're working with the underwriter to, to sell, to market the financing, so. So Madam Chair, what that is, is trying to, was there a?
Oh, go ahead.
Madam.
Does someone want to say something, is that you, Phil?
Yeah, it's, yeah.
Go ahead, Phil. Yeah, Phil McGrane, Clerk.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. If it's possible, if Kathleen and I can maybe either meet with or just get the information from Christian, we can look it over and look at both this year's budget as well as the future budgets to kind of figure out which, and make a recommendation to you in terms of how we move forward. And I think just being able to see that information will help. I'm planning on, but we can easily make a recommendation based on what we funded this year and what projects we're trying to accomplish.
Madam Chair, would you, would you like me to kind of introduce the concept, or would you prefer that we just speak with Phil and Kathleen and then they can bring it back?
No, go ahead. You can introduce the concept, but again, it's, you know, we're approving the resolution today and not approving this. So I just want to make sure that those are separate, so.
Yeah.
Yep, go ahead with the call options.
So with, with, because these are securities, there's more to it than simply what is the interest rate and what are the payments? With a security, with these bonds, they'll have a 10-year call option. And within that, we can also make decisions on how valuable does the county want that call option to be. What that means is if, as a county, you anticipate that once we reach that call, the county will be able to aggressively make prepayments, which is what you did on the prior bonds for this building, then we would want to approach that one way, which is actually on, if you're looking at this, the low high, be more on the high side, accepting higher payments upfront in exchange for a better call option, which means basically, once we reach the call, the power amount would be quite a bit lower by more than the added payments that you made during those 10 years. On the other end of the spectrum is if we want to focus on, let's just get the lowest payments possible and not worry about prepayments, not worry about, you know, we have, of course, lots of other projects on the capital improvement list, let's keep our payments as low as possible. That's a different approach. And so that's something, you know, we have Eric on the line here. The underwriter needs to know going into that pricing, what is kind of the county's focus? So you kind of envision maybe a bit of a decision tree to say, okay, well, if, if you anticipate the county will be able to and want to make prepayments aggressively as you did last time, then we approach it one way, if not another way. And then within that, do you want to take kind of a middle ground approach of, hey, let's, let's try and maximize call feature, but also minimize payments? We can do that as well. Frankly, given the current market, that would be my recommendation. But it's to take kind of that middle ground approach where we're, we're giving your, giving the county the value of that option later, but also trying to keep payments as low as possible in the current market where we do have historically low rates. So, I mean, this is a subject of people's, you know, PhD, PhDs, it goes really deep into math, but that's kind of the general concept. So what we're looking for is not a, kind of a final decision from the Board, but just kind of understand what your priorities would be. Lowest payments possible now or kind of lowest cost over the long run with the expectation of prepayments?
So are we looking, so is this one 20, 20 years or 30 years?
30.
This one's 30 years, because originally, we had penciled out financing for 20 years. So this is 30, so that makes a difference. And then one other quick question before we look to you, Commissioner Lachando. So on our, on our rating, credit rating, how frequently can we go in if we think that, that we've established a possible higher rating and we can get better rates? And how does that factor into this?
Madam Chair, the Standard Reports will do an annual review. So now you can request a review at some point if you feel like something has changed and they should do their review at that time, you can, you can certainly request that. As for how it impacts this, an upgrade or a downgrade to your rating would not impact what you're paying on these bonds, however, it would certainly impact pricing on a refinancing down the road.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Lachando?
So I just want to make sure I'm kind of teeing this up and thinking about it correctly. As it relates to the previous conversation we just had on our investment policy, you know, as an individual homeowner, if I was getting a 2.8 to 3.1% interest rate, I'd be cheering, right? But knowing that we are not able to achieve the same level of return on our investments at the county because of our limitations in financing, we're starting, we're really comparing what our rate of return is for our investment to the cost of financing ultimately. Am I thinking about this correctly, Christian? Or is that just, I know that's just one facet.
Yeah.
We're also thinking about liquidity.
Yeah, I, Madam Chair, Commissioner Lachando, I think you're thinking of that correctly. That's a good point.
Any further conversation or inquiry? Commissioner Malloy, what are your thoughts?
Well, I always favor payments when possible, so probably the middle ground in there of what he's talking from, from my standpoint. Not, not too aggressive to have massive upfront costs, but at the same time, keep the, you know, keep the term costs down as little possible, so.
Yeah, again, I don't think we're making a firm decision.
Somewhere in that middle.
But I think, yeah, I'm, I'm trending along the same lines. I think middle ground, based on your recommendations and what I've heard here today is probably the safest, most prudent way.
Okay.
Okay. All right, anyone ready to make a motion then on the resolution? Oh, we need to close the public hearing? Any further?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move to.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, Madam Chair, I move to approve Resolution 254 as listed on the agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, I just have it. Motion carries. All right, next up, thank you.
Go get them, Christian.
Go get them. Thanks for that update. I know it was last minute that we asked for that, but I really appreciate that. I think it's important for us to know that it's still a favorable market for issuers and so with our, our upgraded credit rating, because I believe you had calculated with the minus in there. And so that's, that's helping and looking better. So appreciate all your work on this.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Mike. All right, next up, we're going to open the public hearing on Resolution 2555 and City of Kuna Urban Renewal Agency. Anyone here to testify? From Kuna, we've had a few meetings with Kuna and their lovely staff over there and their mayor, and I think we're ready to go ahead then. Hearing no testimony, we'll close the public hearing, take up conversation deliberations or a motion.
My only amendment is, as stated before, this has to make sure that Enrique's stays in place and is available for dining.
Enrique's will stay in place.
You want me to add in a taco clause? Yeah, I'll just go for the record. This was really a great example of partnership with some of our cities. We had some back and forth with them in terms of what we felt was appropriate for an urban renewal district, and they were really responsive. And I just, and it was done just very professionally, so I really appreciate both our staff and the City of Kuna staff for the, the work undertaken to get there. So with that, I will go ahead and move to approve Resolution Number 25555 as listed on the agenda.
Great, thank you. You'll need a second.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, I just have it. Motion carries. Next up, we're going to open the public hearing on Resolution 2556. This is to lease, purchase and finance Caterpillar equipment for the landfill. This is also together with Agreement 13911 with Caterpillar Financial Corporation Service. So we've got both a resolution and an agreement. Is anyone here to provide testimony or comment on this? I don't see anyone from the landfill. Okay, we'll go ahead then, close the public hearing. Commissioner Lachando, this is, this is your baby. You're the trash lady.
Trash lady, trashy lady, depends on the day. So just to hearken back, we made a decision, I guess, was it last year or earlier this year, to go ahead and take over the kitchen pack at the landfill, which means that we need some equipment to do it ourselves. We think we're going to save significant amount of dollars by doing it ourselves, and I look forward to getting some cool equipment up there. So with that, I move to approve Resolution Number 2556 and Agreement Number 13911 as listed on the agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Before we go, all those in favor, I just wanted to say, I believe the number we were going to save was, over the course of the, what the contract would have been with an outside vendor, was around 6 million, I believe. It was significant savings, so we're pretty excited about this. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, I just have it. Motion carries. Next up, we're going to open the public hearing on Resolution 2557. This is for Sosource Procurement with Hart Inter-Civic Software Equipment Rentals, Canon Scanners and Associated Services. Is there anyone here to provide testimony?
Madam Chair, I can let you know what this is and for the public's sake. And this is actually a great thing for the November election. Hart Inter-Civic is our provider for our election system, things actually scan the ballots and count the votes. We're doubling our capacity in order to handle the huge volume of absentee ballots, and they are going to be leasing just for this one election, a server for us to be able to do that. We're going to purchase the hardware, the scanners, which we'll be able to use long-term, but it's just a temporary thing. We do intend to seek reimbursement from the CARES Act for this, which should easily be covered, given the circumstances.
Great, thank you, Clerk McGrane. Any comments, questions?
Madam Chair.
Uh-huh, Commissioner Lachando?
Yes, thanks, Phil. So just out of, out of curiosity, now that we have some additional capacity, do you anticipate on election day, election eve, longer than normal or about the same amount of time? What's your, I'm getting all kinds of questions, as you know, from various people. What's your expectation for what our timing will be in terms of returns?
Um, one, I think, you know, I think we have a tour set up tomorrow, so I can walk through a lot of your questions in more detail then. But in terms of election night, we'll shoot for pretty close, for a presidential election, it's going to be late no matter what. There are some issues we're still working through with IT on cameras and security that the legislature has added as a requirement from the special session, so we don't have that piece worked out yet. But as long as we can scan in advance, that's going to be the key determinant, as long as we can use this equipment in advance, we should be able to get done. The holdup, if you recall from May, will be the absentee stuff that arrive on election day. That, that's a cumbersome process. And so we're working through things, we'll be able to show a lot more tomorrow. But I expect by Wednesday morning, we should have results. I think nationally, it will be much, much longer than that.
And I know you're doing a big search, encouraging people to put stuff in early, use the drop boxes, et cetera, but you'll still have those last minute ballots.
We'll have tons of them last day, there's no question about it.
Yeah.
With that, you care to make the motion, Commissioner?
Certainly. Madam Chair, I move to approve Resolution Number 2557 as listed on the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, I just have it. Motion carries. You know what? I didn't, because Phil jumped in and wanted to testify. I'm so sorry. I'm going to close that public hearing and I'll take up a motion, Commissioner Lachando. We have a lot of opening closings going on this morning. Go ahead and restate, please.
I'm just shut. I have moved to approve Resolution Number 2557 as listed on the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, I just have it. Motion carries. Thank you, Annie. Good thing we've got Annie. Okay, next up, Clerk's Office, Phil McGrane. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair. As I just mentioned, tomorrow, I think, I don't know if all of you will make it out, but we'll walk through the elections, what's going on. We have 49 days away from Election Day, but who's counting? And so we're working very hard to get everything. It's worth noting, the very first ballots will be mailed this Friday. That's specific to military and overseas members, so we have, I think it's just over 1,000 ballots going out this week, and then the bulk of them will go out later in a couple months. But so we're scrambling to get all of it worked out. And, you know, running into a fair number of times, this seems like one of the most fluid elections, because we're getting recommendations of all sorts. I don't know if you guys saw in your mailboxes this week, there was both mailing to all voters from the Secretary of State. They have a whole lot of words on the postcard. And then also, this was a surprise to me. It's interesting. But the United States Postal Service also sent out their own mailing regarding the election, although that's caused how up in some states. I don't think it has to the same degree in Idaho. And so just a lot going on in that front. We'll be able to talk about it more tomorrow.
Madam Chair. Commissioner?
So Phil, just, I don't have coming out to elections tomorrow on my calendar. I don't know if it didn't make it on there, but we can reconvene and talk about it, because I would like to come out, see everything. So.
Let me circle back. Matt had commented with Daisy on that, so I'm going to defer to Matt on that.
Yeah, I have it as well.
We'll circle back to figure out where things got missed there. Good catch.
Yep.
Anyway, we'll do it, because it's a good idea. And then, as you see, Madam Chair, on the agenda today, we have some ratifications for L-2 extensions, especially with the Governor's Property Tax Program. There's been a lot of need for extensions this year. So we do ask that there be a motion to ratify those three extensions to the Elba School District, City of Boise, and City of Eagle. This just gives them an additional week to get their L-2 extensions.
We'll go ahead and take that up, and then we'll have a conversation about the Governor's Tax Reform Program. Okay. So I'll take up a motion for the three ratifications, please.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the three requests for extension for budget certifications as listed on the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Ayes have it. Motion carries. All right. Phil, you're back up. L-2 certification and levies.
Yeah. So again, this year, I mean, there's COVID, but then there's also the Governor's Public Safety Initiative. We often refer to it as his property tax program. This is where they're, the State of Idaho is looking to use some of the CARES Act funds to reimburse us for public safety expenses, but then have that money, I guess, transferred in the form of tax relief to property taxpayers. You, as a board, we've talked about this extensively, how the program works and everything going on. I know those cities that we just mentioned are also working through some of the same thing. To give kind of an overview for the public's sake, you know, initially, we were asked in July to submit our total public safety costs, which was just over $55 million that we submitted, based on the guidance from the State of Idaho. They came back and gave us a number of $21,8 million. That's based on if they allocated it even across all the districts who made an initial submission. And then based on legal advice and advice from our office, what we have recommended is that we submit for $16.4 million. This is, based on all the guidance from the Treasury, we feel the most confident in an audit, we could substantiate how our work is substantially different and impacted by CARES, most of this being in the jail and Sheriff's Office. But this also includes, like, central district health payments and some expenses related to juvenile. I think this is a, what we've figured out strikes a good balance. The way this will show up for everyone and why we're having this conversation here is, when we submit our L-2 tax commission, it will show it a levy rate, at the rate we would have had, had this program not existed. Then we will subtract out this amount to provide that property tax relief to taxpayers. And so this money will just appear as a reduction for the taxpayers when we, when they get their, and there will be an insert, as we've discussed at length, in the tax books to explain the program and what the reduction is.
And Phil, could you, for the ratification of folks listening at home, for the taxpayers, what's the annual savings going to be for the average-priced home at $390 something?
Yeah. So for the median home that would be worth $363,000 here in Ada County with the homeowner's exemption, they'll see a reduction of $66.98 of their tax bill, which their tax bill would have paid to about $633 for the Ada County portion. So it's a 10.6% reduction in their tax bill.
Thank you. That's helpful. Hey, anything else from the Clerk's Office? We don't need a motion on that, so if there's nothing else, we'll move on. Thank you, Phil.
Just for the record, I just want to put it out there. You know, I appreciate that we're doing this. We're, you know, we're giving some direction to the Clerk's Office about, you know, what's the appropriate amount to claim. I do want to note for the record, though, that this doesn't change our sort of systemic issues that we have going on in Ada County. I'm sure some of you saw yesterday that we've now hit historic home prices, about $400,000 for median home price, which is rising much, much faster than commercial properties. So while this is great for one year, we're still going to need to be trying to work with the legislature on the homeowner's exemption, circuit breaker, potentially impact fees. This just doesn't, it doesn't get at the heart of the systemic issue that was we might like it to. It certainly will be helpful for one year.
Thank you. Okay, let's go ahead and move on to Claims Journal. Commissioner Malloy, care to make a motion on the Claims Journal today?
Yes, I move to authorize payments of claims on the Claims Journal dated September 11, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Ayes have it. Motion carries. Commissioner Malloy, you want to go ahead and make a motion on the personnel action forums?
Yeah, before I do, just, there's the one issue that hadn't come up before, and that is the longevity increase in the sheriff's pay plan. And so I'm still wrapping my head around all that and reached out to Cassie a little and have some more information. But for the time, I'm not, I don't, I'm not in, it's not a lot of heartburn, but I'm still understanding that, that this is a, an increase that people get in five-year increments simply for their longevity with the sheriff's office, in addition to any COLA or merit or other things. So it was just something new that came to my attention this time, and I just wanted to mention that. So with that, I will move to approve the personnel action forums as listed on the agenda, including eight conditional pay increases, seven introductory period pay completions, three leaves with pay, two longevity increases, sheriff's pay plan, five miscellaneous, two promotions, three salary increases, and four step increases sheriff's pay plan, and that the summary sheet shall remain on file in the Commissioner's office.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Ayes have it. Motion carries. Okay, next up, we have Assessor's Office, and it looks like we have Brad Smith here with us today, Deputy Director. Morning.
Yeah, good morning, Madam Chair. Bob's not available this morning. He's preparing for KBSU radio interview at 10 o'clock, so he's getting ready for that. But overall, we have 13 tax cancellations on the agenda, and then one casualty loss, which unfortunately is actually my sister's house burned down. And I didn't realize it was even on the agenda until the agenda was handed to me. So, yeah, back in April, her house burned down. And luckily, nobody was hurt except for her cat, which passed away. But overall, they're getting it built, and the structure is cost more than the, the costs are more than what the structure is, so it's a total loss. So, but yeah, that was kind of shocking to see. So but overall, has, BTA is getting ready to kick off next Thursday. So in total, we had 51 properties that filed for BTA, and we'll be working on those over the next couple months. And then the only other thing, one of our settlements, we have for Koppel, I'm still waiting back for a recommendation, so I'm hoping to hear back today so we can get back to Mr. Koppel. In regards to that, I sent the email out yesterday, but I'll just stand for questions.
Thank you. And we're so sorry to hear about your sister's property. It's.
Yeah, it's a pretty difficult thing that she's going through. But, you know, I mean, everyone was fine, and that's the, that's the big thing, because everything can be replaced. So.
All right. Well, thank you, Brad. Any questions for Brad at this time? Okay, are you ready, Commissioner Laciando, for the tax cancellation motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve tax cancellations as listed on the agenda, which includes 13 tax cancellations for 2020 and one casualty loss. And authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Ayes have it. Motion carries. Any further discussion from the Assessor's Office?
Just so that market's going crazy, so it's going to be another wild year. I mean, we still got three more months till the lien date, you know, January 1st, which is kind of where we benchmark it. But as you know, we just hit $400,000 on the median value. So the one thing that we're going to be having large increases, if it continues going like this, but there's a lot of new people coming in and lack of supply. So be prepared.
I'm particularly sick during BOE next year.
Me too.
I keep saying that. Okay.
You keep showing up.
I know.
All right. Next up, thanks, Brad. Appreciate that. I'm going to hear from the Treasurer's Office. Beth, before we take up the waiver of late charge and interest on this one parcel, any just general discussion from your office?
As for general discussion, just to follow up to the Governor's Public Safety Initiative, our office has been working really hard to administer this program. Should you or the cities participate, we've been working hard to develop reporting mechanisms to be able to track the parcel less savings. We've been working to revise our tax bills. So really taken all the steps behind the scenes to help implement this program.
We really appreciate all your hard work on that, too. And it's a lot. And you don't have extra staff to do it. So thank you. Okay, any questions for Beth before we talk about the waiver of late charge? And I believe we are, is the gentleman calling in? I believe we have Mr. You. Okay, are you, oh, there you are. Okay, so Daniel, Mr. Daniel, are you here for the tax cancellation?
Yes, I am. Thank you. This is just, thank you for your time. Just very, very briefly, our property taxes were supposed to have been paid by our lender. We refinanced the property shortly before taxes were due. We went down in person to verify that they'd been paid, and were told that we, that that information wasn't available. And then the next thing we heard was a late notice. So we were just requesting a waiver based on the idea that we'd done our due diligence, and then we don't want to really take up a lot of the Commissioner's time. So thank you for your consideration.
So is it Mr. Daniel, correct?
Fell is the last name.
Okay, because that's not showing up. Could you go ahead then and state your name, your full name for the record?
It's Rocha Harz Daniel Fell, F-E-L-L.
Okay, great. Yes, you've got something else showing up on your screen. The name, thank you. Okay, any questions for Mr. Fell at this time? Commissioners?
Yes, Madam Chair. Mr. Fell, when you said you went down to confirm that they were paid, were you saying, were you talking about you went down to the county here, or you went to your lender's office?
We went to the county and paid taxes on our properties.
Okay, well, a minute ago, you stated you went down to confirm that it was paid, and they stated that information wasn't available.
Yes.
My question is, was that, that was at the county, not at your lender? Okay.
Our lender was pretty well used. They consistently paid our taxes late, so one of the reasons we refinanced the property.
Okay, thank you.
So I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, that you came down, you had five parcels in total to pay taxes on, and you physically came down to the county building to pay those, and four of the others showed up, but this one did not show up. Is that correct?
That's correct. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Elizabeth, anything from your office?
Not that I'm aware, but I'll refer to our tax supervisor, see if she wants to add anything else.
I just thought to start out by reviewing the Idaho statutes that were required to follow, 63903, which references the due dates of December 20, and the second half deferred to June 20. And the 63201, which mandates the 2% late charge. On this parcel, our records do indicate that a payment on the second half of 2019 tax charge was not made until July 31, 2020.
Correct, because it wasn't showing up when he came down to pay it in person. Okay. All right. Commissioner Laciando, comments, questions?
I don't think so, not at this time.
Commissioner Malloy, any further kinds of questions?
The one, the one last question I have is, when was he showing, did Mr. Fell come down to the county prior to the due date or after the due date? I guess the timeline is my question.
It was on the due date. The other taxes were, the taxes on our other properties were paid on time.
Okay, on the due date. Okay, thank you.
Katie?
He came in on June 19, I believe, which was a Friday. Taxes were due on the 20th, but that fell on a Saturday, so they were extended to the 22nd. It's possible at that time, we were unable to advise him if his prior lender, Amquah Bank, would make a payment, because they still had until Monday, the 22nd, to make that as a timely payment.
But they didn't make it until July.
The payment ended up coming from the owner and not Amquah Bank.
So Mr. Fell, so when you came down to the Treasurer's Office, did you request to pay taxes on all five properties, including this one, or just on the four?
The properties on the four, and requested information on the fifth.
And what did they tell you, the Treasurer's Office?
That information wasn't available, that they couldn't tell. Perhaps because the taxes weren't, weren't actually due until the next Monday. I don't know.
Okay. All right. Any questions from the Board? We have our in our discretion to uphold or to waive, or to partially waive.
Are you closing the hearing on this, Madam Chair?
I don't believe it's a hearing. It's just whenever you're ready to make a motion or a decision, and then a motion. So I'll, you know, I'll start with this. I, you know, I'm inclined to waive it. I think that Mr. Fell came down in good faith to try to attempt to pay, and it wasn't showing up on our records. And it's one of those things, I don't think the Treasurer's Office was at fault, and I don't think he's at fault. It probably lies somewhere with the title company. But I, it is in our discretion to waive, and I feel that there was good faith effort, and he physically showed up and inquired about it. So it's kind of where I'm headed.
Yeah, I don't, I don't really think that the Treasurer or the homeowner themselves, I track very much with that, are necessarily the ones at fault. Given the due date falling on a Saturday and the extension, I can understand how it would be difficult to get in touch with the lender over the weekend and have time to determine if that payment was going to be made or not. So I am leaning, you know, I'm inclined to waive this as well. It would be one to make a motion unless, unless Commissioner Laciando has other comments.
I'm similarly inclined. I do want to note for the record, though, that we have typically, we have often asked taxpayers to make sure they're talking to their lender, and it's sometimes their lender who needs to be responsible for those late fees, given our responsibility under ECA code. In this case, because of the sort of lack of clarity, we did come in person to the Treasurer's Office, I'm willing to do this. But I just want to make sure that we're noting, you know, if it's the fault of a lender to make a payment, it's really something that maybe to be responsible for.
Okay, with that, care to make a motion, Commissioner Malloy?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move to waive the late charges and interest for the 2019 property rule as listed on the agenda, and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
Second.
Okay, also second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Fell.
And again, noting no faults on the part of the Treasurer's Office.
Correct, yep. Hopefully, we won't see you next year.
I don't think so. I want to thank everyone for their time. I'm sorry it took so much of your time.
That's okay. That's what we're here for. We're here to serve. Thanks. All right. Next up, approval of minutes. And Commissioner Laciando, care to make?
Yes, Madam Chair. I move to approve the minutes as I testified on the agenda. Authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Ayes have it. Motion carries. Okay, next up, weed and pest. Need a motion on the notice of the lien and the release of the lien.
Madam Chair, I move to approve one notice of lien and one removal of lien as listed on weed, pest, for, sorry, of lien for weed and pest as listed on the agenda, and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Ayes have it. Motion carries. Next up, we have 47 agreements. And before we start, I'm going to ask that we table the following agreements, so we can have a discussion in legal. These agreements come from Terry Durden over at the Sheriff's Office, and it is on the contracts for community service workers. And I had some questions about the insurance, about liability, these companies, organizations, public ones carrying liability insurance. And then I also had some questions, some clarification on workers' comp, and why the county is carrying workers' comp on these. So if we can table these, I'm going to give you the numbers here. It's 13900, 01, 02, 03, and 04, and then 13908, 09, and 10. They're basically all the same.
Can you say those again? 13900, 01, 02, and 34, or what?
03, 03, 04, 08, 09, and 10.
Okay. And Madam Chair, for totally different reason, I wanted to pull agreement number 13899, because I know there's some ongoing conversation, which with, speaking of weed and pest, with ACHD about ensuring that roadways are taken care of for noxious weeds. And I think we're going to be in a good position on that, but I just wanted to share that before I approve this agreement.
Okay, that sounds fine. Pull that one too, anything else? Okay, I'll go have to take a motion on this.
No, I did learn, uh, I did call weed and pest, though, and when I saw that we had a contract with Orkin and wondered why we didn't do it ourselves, but I have my, uh, answer that we're not permitted by statute to handle that particular task.
So would you like me to make a motion to, um, are we tabling these? I'll take one.
I had one, I had one other, on the car park, the supplemental parking. I just wanted to make sure that we, um, how long those, because I, these are the ones from the car park that we're leasing out. And with, you know, COVID and folks staying home, I don't know if those are annual or monthly or quarterly, or if we signed an annual agreement on those. Do you know, Nancy?
It's a monthly payment.
It's a monthly, so we can give 30 days' notice? Okay, it's a monthly payment, so we give 30 days' notice, so I'm good with keeping that one, as is. Okay?
Okay, so Madam Chair, I will move to table agreements number, uh, 13899, 13900, 13901, 13902, 13903, 13904, 13908, 13909, and 13910.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion to second, oh, to what date? Oh, to what date? We need a day. The 22nd?
September 22nd.
Okay, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Second.
All those in favor state aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, as have it, motion carries. So next up, we'll need a motion for the remaining agreements. Any further discussion?
So we tabled, we tabled nine and we have 36 left, if I'm not mistaken, if my math is right.
I think you're doing the math correctly.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the remaining 36 agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair, authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
We have a motion to second, all those in favor state aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, as have it, motion carries. Next up, we have procurement. We have a review of bids received and award recommendation for the county sheriff's, uh, office modular classroom. Mr. Perkins?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Uh, before you this morning, we have, uh, two bid reviews for you. The first one being the, uh, bid 20079, rebid of Ada County Sheriff's Office Modular Classroom. And, uh, we do have a, a letter that we'd like to submit before you, if, uh, you'd like me to read it into the record.
Yes, please.
All right, uh, letter dated September 16th, 2020, to the Board of Ada County Commissioners, Ada County Procurement regarding bid 20079. Dear members of the Board, Ada County Procurement received three responses for bid 20079. The following are the names of the bidders and the bid amount submitted. Uh, bidder number one, Pacific Mobile Structures with a bid amount of $128,193. Bidder number two, Specialty Modular Incorporated with a bid amount of $146,275.20. Bidder number three, Design Space Modular Buildings with a bid amount of $149,676. After reviewing the bid submitted, it is the recommendation of the evaluation group to award the contract for bid 20079 to Pacific Mobile Structures as the lowest responsive bidder in the amount of $128,193.
That was $328,133?
Uh, it was $128,193.
Okay, you're breaking up a little bit. Okay, great.
Pardon.
Okay. So Commissioner Lacheyondo or Commissioner Malloy, are you ready to make the motion on that or any questions for Bob?
I've got it.
Okay, you've got it, I've got it as well.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Lacheyondo.
Madam Chair, I move to accept the recommendation of the evaluation committee in award bid 20079, rebid Ada County Sheriff's Office Modular Classroom to Pacific Mobile Structures in the amount of $128,193.
Second.
We have a motion to second, all those in favor state aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, as have it, motion carries. All right, Bob, you're up again.
Yes, Madam Chair, Commissioners, uh, the, uh, final, um, uh, bid review for you is, uh, bid 20080, Ada County Weed and Pest Chevrolet Colorado. Uh, we have a recommendation for a 2021 four-wheel drive Colorado. Uh, that's quantity of one and a recommendation for two 2020 four-wheel drive extended cab, uh, white Colorado's. And, uh, if you'd like, I can read the, uh, recommendation letter and tune it into the record.
Please do.
All right, uh, dated September 16th, 2020, to the Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement regarding bid 20080. Dear members of the Board, Ada County Procurement achieved three responses for bid 20080. The following are the names of the bidders and the bid amount submitted. For the, um, uh, 2021 Chevrolet Colorado, uh, three responses. Mountain Home Auto Ranch had a bid of $32,273. Kendall had a no bid. Peterson Chevrolet, a no bid as well. Uh, for the, uh, two, uh, 2020 four-wheel drive Colorado extended cabs, Kendall Auto Group had a bid of $58,346. Mountain Home Auto Ranch was a no bid. Peterson Chevrolet was a no bid. After reviewing the bid submitted, the recommendation of the evaluation group to award the purchase order for one 2020 Colorado to Mountain Home Auto Ranch for $32,273. And the two 2020 Colorado's to Kendall Auto Group for $58,346. Thanks.
Thank you. So Patrick, are you, are you, um, sad that they did not buy your Nissan that you've been trying to sell for the weed and pest? You're on mute. There you go.
There we are. Anyway, uh, yeah, no, I, I've decided that that's probably only good to be a tow vehicle now anyways.
Okay. Any questions or you care to make a motion?
Uh, I just want to confirm these numbers. Uh, Mountain Home was $32,273 and Kendall Auto was $58,346.
That's correct on both of them.
All right, thank you. Um, yes, unless Commissioner Lacheyondo has any questions, I'm ready to go ahead and, uh, make the motion.
I think she's ready.
Okay. Madam Chair, I move to accept the recommendation of the evaluation committee in award bid 20080 to Mountain Home Auto Ranch for the one Chevrolet Colorado in the amount of $32,273. And the other, you Kendall Auto, and I think that was for the four by four, in the amount of $58,346.
Right.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. All those in favor state aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, as have it, motion carries. And before we move into the last item, we're going to keep Bob Perkins on for just a minute. Um, this just in, hot off the press, uh, congratulations, Bob. He, uh, is one of 118 people in the entire universe to obtain the NIGP-CPP certification. So. So now we get to read off all of the initials as usual and add NIGP to it, too. So you're just trying to make this more difficult for us, aren't you?
It is, it's gonna be a tongue teaser.
Congratulations.
He's gonna have to keep reading his letters, even, even post-COVID.
I'm assuming, Madam Chair, that that's the National Institute of, uh, Gathering and Purchasing, I don't know why.
Institute of Governmental Purchasing.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's quite an accomplishment, quite a feat. So congratulations, I know this was one of your goals for your professional development plan and, and we just had that meeting last month and you've knocked it off already, so can't wait to see what's next in your goals, thank you.
Thank you.
It's awesome.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Woo-hoo. All right, let's move on to miscellaneous findings of fact and what is this, conclusions of law and decision regarding compliance with the statutory provisions for proposed tax deed parcel. And I believe this is parcel number R7335520195. Brad, is this something you wanted to comment on?
I actually wasn't aware of this being on the, I just, I was snooping on it in the property tax system, so I'm, I'm kind of educated a little bit on it in the last five minutes, but I think this is probably something Beth needs to speak up.
Okay, Beth, and I believe I was absent for this meeting when it was first presented, so I'll leave Commissioner Lacheyondo and Malloy to make the motions on this one. Go ahead, Beth. Whoops, you're muted.
I am muted, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
There we go, okay, go ahead, Beth.
Okay, I'll go ahead and comment on these, um, findings of fact and conclusions of law. These arise from a tax deed hearing that was conducted on April of 16th, on August 26th. Um, and I slipped to April because this hearing was actually delayed. We postponed it originally due to COVID. So, um, once we have the hearing on August 26th, um, individuals did appear and invited Simone and others. Uh, and I would just note that the individuals who appeared, um, and so cooperative in the court. And the tax deed is not something that we look forward to, um, but it is a statutory process. Um, there are certain provisions in the law that lay out specifically to the treasurer and the board will do when there's tax delinquency and the board finds that the treasurer and tax collector has satisfied those provisions. So, um, based on the testimony that we did present at the hearing, uh, we maintain our position that we have complied with statutory provisions. And happy to answer any questions at all.
Commissioner Malloy? Commissioner Lacheyondo, go ahead.
So, yeah, this is, this is heartbreaking and a, you know, a sad situation that a decedent passed away without a will. Um, you know, the heirs really struggled to, uh, continue to struggle to kind of get some clarity and unfortunately have not been able to do that and have not paid taxes on this parcel since 2015. Um, I, looking through the record, there's a pretty detailed record of the treasurer's office, um, reaching out over the last five years to try and work with it, help assist them, try to update them. Uh, we did, um, try to pick some additional information after the hearing and that information and what I have noted has further substantiated that the treasurer, um, did indeed follow all the statutory rules and, and, and so I, I don't feel like we have any other kind of option at this point but to go ahead and, and issue a tax deed, um, as, as hard and, and tense that might be.
Commissioner Malloy?
Yeah, and I know that, uh, this is one we had legal advice on to, you know, and there was even the question if those that testified during the hearing even had legal standing to, uh, present, but again, their evidence at least was heard, presented. But, um, you know, there, there's obviously some issues in the family dynamics here. Um, and not, not being the legal owners or legal parties of interest even, um, kind of leaves us really with not many options on what the county needs to do, so. It is a difficult situation.
All right, with that, you care to make a motion, Commissioner?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move to adopt the finding of facts, conclusions of law, and decision and direct the treasurer to immediately issue tax deed for parcel number R7335520195, located at 6945 West Holiday Drive, Boise, Idaho 83709, in favor of Ada County.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second, all those in favor state aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll abstain since I was not there. Motion is approved. Motion carries. Okay, any further discussion for today? All right, we're going to go ahead and go off the record and we'll go right back on the record, um, and go into Emergency Medical Services District meeting. All right, good morning, everyone. Today's Tuesday, September 15th, and the time is 10:05 a.m., 2020. Board of Ada County Commissioners is in session as, uh, meeting with Emergency Medical Services District, um, Director Sean Rain. We have all three commissioners with us. Also with us in the room or on bridge, we have Emma Taylor from the PA's office and Steve Rutherford. All right, any changes to this agenda, Madam Clerk?
No, there are not.
All right, let's go ahead then. Um, Commissioner Lacheyondo, how about a motion for the Claims Journal? Start us off.
Sure, Madam Chair, I move to authorize payment of claims as listed on the Claims Journal dated September 11th, 2020, regarding EMS expenditures.
Second.
We have a motion to second, all those in favor state aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, as have it, motion carries. Commissioner Lacheyondo, you want to go ahead with approval of minutes?
Sure thing. I move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair or acting chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
We have a motion to second, all those in favor state aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, as have it, motion carries. Commissioner Lacheyondo, one more.
Okay, Madam Chair, I move to approve the personal action forms as listed on the agenda, including one introductory period pay completion, one miscellaneous, one salary increase, and that the salary sheet remain on file in the Commissioners' office.
Second.
We have a motion to second, all those in favor state aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, as have it, motion carries. All right. Commissioner Malloy, we have one agreement, 13914.
Refresh me, I don't have my agenda in front of me. What was that one for?
It's a memorandum of, of understanding between Ada County and Idaho Correctional Alternative Placement Program, CAP, Idaho State Police, Ada County Emergency Medical Services, got it, Kuna?
M-O-U, yep, all right.
It's a M-O-U.
Madam Chair, I move to approve, I am, I move to approve the one agreement as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
We have a motion to second, all those in favor state aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, as have it, motion carries. General discussion, good morning.
Actual, sorry, what is the actual CAP facility, Sean?
Uh, Madam Chair, Commissioner Lacheyondo, it is actually, uh, an alternative placement program for substance abuse offenders. It's an all-male program out, um, it's out in, um, South Pleasant Valley, uh, out in that same area.
I was worried it was, uh, gonna be X-bow.
X-bow. Why not?
So, so, but, so wanting to make a, wanting to make a bad Beatles joke, are they open on the weekend for a Pleasant Valley Sunday?
Ooh.
Oh, Sean, what's happening in your neck of the woods this week?
Well, Madam Chair, um, tomorrow morning, we have our first department meeting is, uh, me sitting as director and, uh, Commissioner, Commissioner Lacheyondo has agreed to speak. Uh, we've got her right up at the, the first part of the meeting so that she can get to our other commitments, so I appreciate that and thank you. Um, we had our deputy director hiring, uh, that position closed on Friday. We got eight applicants, so I'm really excited about that. The process will, uh, take place. We have our boards later this month. Um, both the board from, that is comprised of field providers, battalion chiefs. Uh, and then the second board is actually myself, John Blake, and then, uh, a representative from Meridian and Boise Fire, so excited about that process. Um, we're down to one person on quarantine or isolation right now. Um, just waiting on some test results, so some improvement from last week. Um, and outside of that, we have an access JPA meeting tomorrow. Um, we're going to be updating the agreement. Uh, some of the language in that had, had aged out and so we're gonna, uh, we're, we're pretty much there, Nancy has been working with the other attorneys, so we've got that agreement that we'll be bringing forward here soon. Uh, we'll also be discussing the Citizens Advisory Group that will be basically replacing our that will be basically replacing our advisory board, that will be part of access as opposed to just Ada County paramedics, so that's a, a agreement forward. And then, uh, we'll also be discussing system performance standards, and so really, uh, uh, developing performance standards for the entire system instead of, uh, doing things in silos like we've done historically. So that's, uh, that's kind of on the, the docket for this week.
That's exciting. That's a lot.
It is.
Yeah. How are you feeling? Doing, all right? It's been what?
Been great.
Two months, one month?
Actually, I've been a little over a month, yeah. I'm feeling great.
Good, good.
It's, uh...
All right.
How are, he's, uh, holding up. Oh, excuse me. Sorry, how are your employees doing with trying to juggle online schooling against a job that very much needs to be filled? Like, how's that all going?
You know, I haven't heard many complaints. I think just the nature of the business, because we work twenty-four hour shifts, that people have always had to have, um, different childcare arrangements. And, and so, uh, you know, I, I have a feeling like people are, are getting through it fairly well. Uh, certainly, there is the COVID fatigue that I think all of us feel, um, but, you know, I, I haven't heard of any big issues that have popped up. But I, I think that's why, it's just, you know, our people have always faced that, um, alternate childcare situation just because of the shift work.
Sean, are you seeing an, an uptick in any calls, uh, because of the poor air quality?
I, I have been watching that. I, I have a, a program that, that I actually got from Boise Fire called Intera, and I'm getting logins for all of our command staff here. Um, but it allows me to just kind of monitor the system. And so we've seen a, a little bit of an uptick with, uh, shortness of breath calls, you know, and it's tough because you wonder, is it COVID, or is it smoke and, and that kind of thing? And so, um, the dispatchers are doing a good job of screening, uh, and asking, you know, fever and, and that kind of thing to kind of discern whether it's COVID or, or just an exacerbation of an existing, uh, breathing problem. But, um, you know, it's not been a dramatic increase in the last few days.
I just wanted to make sure that you were aware that there were, um, I think ten to fifteen, uh, folks in RVs show up at Expo yesterday, um, fleeing evacuees from the smoke in Oregon, particularly around Bend. And so we're looking, we're looking at more probably coming in over this next week, um, unless conditions improve. And so just a heads up, um, Bob is, that, working with our legal department, and we're just squaring things away, making sure that we can accommodate folks. So they have a place to stay.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, any further discussion?
Well, Madam Chair, I can tell you, it's, it's a lifetime asthmatic. I'm, I'm getting ready to try to flee to Hawaii or somewhere, so, um...
Got to quarantine for two weeks if you do.
Yeah, they won't let you in.
This, this smoke, this smoke has not been easy, I'll tell you. Um, yeah, been difficult.
And we do have that ankle bracelet that we're putting on you, so we're going to know if you're calling in from Hawaii.
I, I, well, I, I volunteered after I found out I had a friend that says he knows how to get those things off, but we'll, we'll see how clever he really is.
That's going to be our parting gift to Commissioner Malloy, is a bracelet.
We're not gonna let you get away so easily. This is, you're gonna be out on probation is what's gonna happen.
Uh, anything else for, any questions for Sean? Sean, just make sure, Commissioner Laciando, when you, you're gonna go tomorrow morning to speak, just make sure.
I'll be on the morning. I'll be on Zoom.
Okay, please express our appreciation from the entire board, that we really do appreciate everything they're doing and, and have a lot of empathy, um, and understanding for what's going on and how difficult their job has been, and COVID fatigue, and now smoke, and Mormon cricket. So what's next? Yikes.
All right, Madam Chair, thank you.
I think it's gonna kill our clowns for a Halloween theme this year, so.
God.
My bingo card.
Killer clowns. Lovely. Let's go ahead and go into recess. We're gonna go right back on and reconvene as Abimor Infrastructure. Today's Tuesday, September fifteenth, and the time is ten fifteen AM. And the Board of Ada County Commissioners is in session, uh, meeting as Abimor Community Infrastructure District Number One. All three Commissioners are with us. Also, we have with us on Bridge, Emma Taylor and Steve Rutherford. And do we have anyone from Abimor calling in or out there? Okay, it's just us.
No changes to the agenda?
Any changes to this agenda? I believe we have one, uh, agenda item to add. And nope, that's in PA staff, so never mind. I don't see any changes to this agenda then. So let's go ahead with new business, Claims Journal, and I'll need a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to authorize payments on the Claims Journal dated September eleventh, twenty twenty regarding Abimor CID expenditures.
We have a second? We have a motion, a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, guys. Habit, motion carries. Next up, I'll need a motion for the approval of minutes.
Okay, Madam Chair, I move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, guys. Habit, motion carries. Any further discussion? Hearing now, we'll go ahead.
Oh, real quick, um, had we already sent out the letter regarding, uh, getting everybody together? Is that, does Abimor have that at this point?
Emma?
Yes, I believe it was sent out. I was copied on it. Judy sent it out.
Okay, you haven't heard anything back at this point?
I have not.
Okay. Well, I look forward to, um, I have a, you know, a fellow Commissioner on the Health Board with me who's, um, in Boise County, and he's, um, called me yesterday and said he was really anxious to do that. So, um, I, I look forward to a real good discussion.
Good. All right, any further discussion? Okay, let's go ahead and go into recess, and then we're gonna get right back on in legal.